Good evening, everybody. You're here at the Sholo City Council Chamber. And we're here for a candidate's forum. The candidate's forum is for the positions that are up for election in the Sholo City Council. So we have three positions that are actually open. And I'll go over real quick. It's what we have as far as when they're coming up. So the primary election is going to be held on August 28th for three council seats. And there's also a ballot proposition. We're not talking about that tonight. But the voters can choose from four candidates. We have the incumbent council members Mike Alsop, Brent Hatch, and John Leach Jr., and a newcomer, Kevin Weaver. Kevin Weaver had a family thing that had called him away for this evening. So he is not here and not attending. I wanted to send his best wishes to the other candidates. So what we're going to do is basically ask some questions. We're going to take some questions that are from the audience. And thanks for everyone on Sholo TV that's watching as well. What we're going to do is cover basic things that are going on in the city, the concerns from the people of the city, and let the candidates answer. First up, what we're going to do, and we'll just go alphabetical. How's that sound? Is give the candidates a little opportunity to tell about themselves by giving each two minutes. So Mr. Alsop, why don't you start?
Thank you, Rob. My name is Mike Alsop. I've lived here in Sholo for going on 40 years. Been married for 41 years. I have three daughters that attended Sholo High School here. And I have five grandkids. And one of them is going to be graduating from Sholo High School this year. So been around here for a while. I started out, just like anything else, wanted to volunteer. So I volunteered my time as a volunteer firefighter and EMT. I put together the first softball tournament to raise money for the Jaws of Life here in Sholo for the Sholo Fire Department. Then ran for the fire board. Was on the fire board for eight years, a chairman of the fire board for a couple of those years. I was on Planning and Zoning Commission. Was the vice chair of that for three and a half years. And then presently on the city council going on my ninth year because I was appointed to the council for one year. So that's just about where I'm at here right now for Sholo.
Awesome. And next up, Mr. John Leach Jr.
My name is John Leach Jr. I've been in Sholo for about 44 years now. When I came to Sholo from California, unfortunately, I had long hair. Needed to come to Sholo, slow my life down. So it was a good thing for me. Got real involved with the city. I retired from the fire department. I spent 26 years on the Sholo Fire Department. After that, I decided to do nothing for a while, but then I got bored. So I got on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was on that, like Mike said, I think I was on that for like six years. I was chairman for about three. Had some people ask me about running for city council. And if you know me, I'm not much of a politician. I just, I love Sholo. You know, like I said, I've been here 44 years. I love the mountain. That's the only reason. I really like to stay involved. I don't want to get bored. So I really like to stay involved. I'm also the vice chairman of ACOG right now, which is Northern Arizona Council of Governments. But I really just like staying involved in the city of Sholo. I wasn't sure I was going to run this next term because this will be my third term. I'm definitely terming myself out. I think we need to get more people. The reason I got on eight years ago is I thought people would see somebody like me that's not much of a politician, just loves the community, get involved. Well, we don't really have people that really want to get involved. We have a lot of people that maybe come to our meetings that want to kind of direct us, but I'd like to see more people get up here and get more involved. So I'm going to stay involved. Like I said, I love this town and I love doing something in our community. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Brent Hatch?
I'll introduce myself. Good evening. I'm Brent Hatch, and I'm very glad to see the faces in the audience tonight. Wish we could fill this up on council nights. We need more participation on behalf of the constituency to come in and see how we conduct ourselves. I'm here this evening to ask for your vote. I'm currently the vice mayor in Sholo. And I've been involved in the Sholo City Council for six years. I was in the planning and zoning organization and the chairman there for a couple of years before. I got involved with planning and zoning and the government of Sholo as I was superintendent on board building the Hampton Hotel in the Meadow and had to come down to the city and visit once in a while. But we thank you for coming out this evening. I'm married to Sharon Hatch, that lovely lady in the audience back there that doesn't have somebody sitting beside her, I hope. We have two children, Tad and Tammy. And we've got two grandsons and three great-granddaughters. And we're really proud of them. I'll show you pictures after the meeting if you'd like to see that. I mean, I've really enjoyed my work with the council with these two gentlemen. They're senior to me. I'm the new person on this panel up here this afternoon. But it's really been a joy working with the city of Sholo, with the constituency that we see, with the management in the city. We're very proud of that. And they're very engaged in running the city efficiently, and we appreciate that very much. I've seen and had the honor to participate in the positive growth of the city with the conversion of the automobile agency into a public safety building on Main Drag. That's really nice to see that when you come into town. It's impressive to me still to look at that and say, "The city the size of Sholo has a very, very nice public safety building." But with that, I'll turn it back to Rob, and I thank you again for coming. And we'll see how the debate turns out.
Oh, we're debating too?
Oh, yes. So hey, thank you, gentlemen, for that. You know, I'm, by the way, I'm here, my name is Rob Heppner. I'm here for the Sholo Chamber of Commerce. I'm the president this year and won't have to be next year, which is yay. So it's our pleasure as a Chamber of Commerce to be able to put this forth for you. Now, as a Chamber of Commerce, we've been noticing a lot of increase in business and businesses coming to the mountain. And specifically here in Sholo. If you just drive down the Deuce or you drive down the other main road there, you're going to find a lot of things under construction. So first question I'm going to have for you is, what's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts? So I'll start with Mr. Leach. We'll start, Mr. Leach Jr. there. Go there.
Well, obviously, rehabbing the buildings we got here is the best thing we've done. I mean, the old Walmart, the Safeways, the Cow Ranch. I know some of the big box buildings. We really, you know, we like the mom and pops. We like the small town. We always liked the small town. But the people that own these properties, we want somebody in them. So a vacant building is not a good building. The growth as far as the houses go, that's slowly happening. But I personally like to see people in these buildings. I mean, an empty building, I think it looks terrible. So getting these businesses up here, granted, some of them are big box stores like Cow Ranch and things like that, but it still looks better. Like Brent said about the car dealership, turning that into our public safety building was phenomenal. Empty building in the middle of town. So anytime we can put a business in a vacant building is definitely a positive. Plus, there's some tax incentives in there too as well. So absolutely, I think in my mind, I'd rather see those buildings full of businesses. Well, we get the business there, and then we put the people in a house. So we can do both. But we've got to get a business in that vacant building first.
Good. Mr. Hatch?
Yes, Sharon and I've been in Sholo for about 20 years now. And we've been visiting this area of White Mountains in Arizona for about 40 years. And I hearken back to an accident that I had when we were visiting friends. I fell with a ladder, and it went out from under me, and I had to go down to the hospital and spend time there. And I look at this new hospital, it's going up, and it's first class. It's going to really, really enhance the livability, I believe, and the attractiveness of Sholo to bring people here. There are a lot of people that are going to retire. And one of the first things that comes to mind, because my friends asked me, "What do you do for a hospital when you get ill?" We've got one down the road that's just one of the better ones in the state when it gets up and going. We're proud of that. And I'm proud of Ron Carther having the foresight to bring that to town. And it's looking like a wonderful endeavor as it comes up. So we're anxious to see that up and around. As far as the community goes, I think that as we grow, we'll become more attractive to those others that are traveling through. That's the way we were attracted to Sholo. We had friends that had summer homes up here, and we found the climate wonderful, the people very friendly. And the amenities in the community were not really very robust when we first came here. But now I'm seeing a growth in businesses filling in those areas that need some more. We've got more coffee shops, I think, than anybody in Phoenix could talk about. But anyway, I'm proud of Sholo, and I like the atmosphere up here. I like the people, the congeniality. People will hold the door for other people that they don't even know. I notice that. Older people holding doors for younger people coming in. It's the attitude of the people in this town that makes it attractive to the passerby.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Alsop?
Thank you, Rob. I think they're both equal. The reason is because just what we've been talking about with the Sholo Police Department, we just refurbished that. As a building that was, could have been an ISO in downtown, but we made it look like a really dynamic building. We're also looking at Kmart right now, trying to get people into Kmart. So we know with our staff, they go out real diligently to try to get somebody into those buildings as fast as they can. The housing part of Sholo, Arizona was put on hold back in 2008, 2009 when the economy went down. And at that time, you could see all the housing subdivisions going up and a lot of houses going up. So that slowed down, but they're starting to come back now. And so we're starting to see new building permits come out for the houses. But the really nice thing I've been seeing is lately in these neighborhoods you're driving around town is houses are going up for sale and selling fast, and people are moving right back into them. So it's a big turnover, a big change. And the real estate people are really liking it because of the way that housing is turning over. But if without remodeling and fixing up some rehabs downtown or even in the subdivisions, those are the things that really make this town look good. So I think both of them are excellent because you need to show the new growth and also you need to keep up the old stuff. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. So next up, a question about our community and getting around it. Some people in the community say that we have traffic problems. What do you think? And how would you mitigate those concerns or change any of the situation? What would you do as a council member? We'll start with Mr. Hatch first.
You know, I've noticed that the traffic volume has picked up this summer proportionally. I don't know what's bringing it up here.
Hundred and sixteen down there.
Well, yeah, but some of them have Texas plates and New Mexico plates. But I really think that our traffic flow through Sholo has been helped with the addition of the Central Wolford pass-through. I notice our city street in front of our home is quite a thoroughfare for people coming from Highway 60 to cut across through to 260 without having to go all the way through town. One thing that I noticed, it isn't good. It's something that we really need to focus on and take care of. We have posted speed limits, and it seems like those signs are nuisance to a lot of drivers. I know that some of these streets through the residential areas mark 25 miles an hour. We'll see cars going 60, maybe 70 miles an hour early in the morning. But all through the day, there needs to be an awareness on the part of the drivers in town that those speed limits are posted for a good reason. There's children and there are older adults that can't get out of the way as quickly as we used to. And I think that I would ask everyone to look at the speed limit signs and observe the speed limit. As far as the traffic flow, it's hindered because I really feel like we need turn signal light on Central and the Deuce of Clubs to facilitate people coming off of 260 or off of the Deuce of Clubs. 260, I'm sorry. But to get back into the city, onto Wolford and that area. But that's an issue that I think that we've covered with ADOT. We don't get a turn light there. And I wish that we could move that issue along and get a turn light. People have been killed in that intersection. And so it's a safety hazard.
Mr. Alsop?
Thank you, Rob. You know, it's just like it's a standard joke around here when it comes summertime. They always, everybody I talk to says, "From May to October, you can't, there's no left turns." After that, then you can start making left turns. And so just because the traffic is so bad on downtown. Now, just like Vice Mayor Brent was telling us Hatch was Central, we've talked about that for a lot of years. ADOT has came up and did surveys and tests and everything else. And we've still been telling them that we need a turn lane there and an arrow on Central, and they just haven't passed it yet. So we're still talking to them. Every time we turn around, we always put a little nudge in ADOT to see if we can get that changed. But we also have Penrod Road that used to be a two-lane dirt road, and we have that all built up. And the other is, we've always, we've been talking for quite a few years on a tire grant to try to get the bridge going across Shoal Lake to get hooked up for, down there by Lowell's and Home Depot, the South, the Scotts Ranch Road, and try to get that connected up to Penrod to give us another way out. But it's taken 40 years to get these roads. When I first moved up here, it was a two-lane road from Sholo all the way to Pine Top with trees right next to them. And there was no passing. And so there's, it's been changed a lot, and we tried to get some secondary streets off the main roads so we can try to get traffic flowing out to different areas. And staff has always been working with that and trying to get us new routes. And so I think we just need to keep on looking at that and keep on striving for getting bridges and getting other roads to get us around downtown. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Leach?
Well, I think a lot of the problems, especially with, when I think of traffic congestion, I think of the Deuce of Clubs. We don't control that. That's 100% ADOT. We can't say we want a light here, we want a turn signal here. Yeah, we do. We've been doing that for as long as I've set up here. But it doesn't do any good. I noticed they are starting to put some down at Penrod. I mean, they are starting to put some turn signal lanes, but we have no control over that. We have the control throughout the city, throughout the community. And I think we have a great flow. I know we're building a road right now next to the Elks Lodge, which is going to take you all the way to Wolford. So there is things that we're doing in the community to move us around. And y'all have been here long enough, you know the shortcuts, so we all use those. Some of the people coming up don't know them. So yeah, the Deuce of Clubs, it gets real busy, but there's not a lot we could do with that. We want the people up here. We have to deal with the traffic flow. We don't want to see less traffic because that means less people coming up here. So the people in the community take the back roads, the people coming up here are going to be down the Deuce of Clubs, and there's absolutely nothing we can do with that. I mean, we've tried. They took parking away, and that wasn't even us. That was ADOT again in front of Cattlemen's, all that parking lot, those businesses right there that had the parking on the Deuce of Clubs. Guess who got yelled at for that? Well, we did. But guess whose fault it was? It wasn't ours. ADOT controls the Deuce of Clubs. There is absolutely nothing we can do with it. We talk to them all the time. Do they listen? My opinion, absolutely not. They might listen, but they don't. Anything that we've ever wanted done, it doesn't happen. I mean, there's another traffic light going up at the hospital. That one probably is going to be needed when the new hospital is built. Hopefully someday, that intersection with Walmart and the hospital and all that is going to get rebuilt. I've seen plans for that with ADOT, but it's going to be a multimillion-dollar project because if you're stopped at that intersection, it's crooked. So look at all the wrecks that are up at that intersection. So that's something in the future that we've been telling ADOT that's needed. So we'll see. I mean, I think getting around the city is fine. I personally do. I think you just take the back roads, the Deuce of Clubs and the highways. Yeah, but I'd rather see them full than empty for business.
So we got a question from the audience, and I'm going to add a little bit to it. Are all the, because of yes, no, are all council members, are you a pro-growth council member right now? Pro-growth? And then why is to your answer? And we'll start with Mr. Alsop.
You know, if you didn't have growth, then this town will be stagnant. I mean, you just got to listen to Councilman John Leach Jr. And if we don't have traffic, we don't have things going on in town, it's stagnant. Now, pro-growth, I'm going to say, yeah, I'm probably pretty much growth, but I'm also conservative on the growth. We need it to keep businesses going, keep families going, to keep prospects for our kids coming from school and graduating to have a job. So we have to have that growth to keep things going. Now, am I in for a type of growth that will boost triple the size of Sholo in three years? I'm a little bit hesitant on that because we have a lot of infrastructure we have to complete and get things built up on. So I'd much rather see a nice, slow growth, but a constant growth. Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
I absolutely love the slow growth. I think we've done a really good job as long as I've been involved in the city. When I first came to Sholo, you know, of course, we didn't have a radio. We had one radio station. So there's a lot of things that have changed in 44 years. But I absolutely like the growth. We're a tourist community. People come up here and they see this town and they stay, correct? So I mean, we're definitely a tourist town. So we've got to have the slow growth. We've got to have the people up here. And we've got to have the stuff for the people to come up here. And I love the idea of finding jobs for our kids. That's one of the toughest things is once our kids graduate and keep them up here. That's something that we're working on too. I mean, we do as a council, when we have our retreat, we think about that. That's probably one of the number-one items on how do we keep our kids here? The hospital's a good thing. I mean, the fire department, full-time fire department, the ambulance service. So there is other things that they can do up here to keep them up here, which is more growth. Again, so if we keep our kids here, they're going to have their kids. So we're going to grow. Slow growth, yes. I don't, like Mr. Alsop, I don't want to see, you know, 50,000 people in the next three or four years. I love the small community. To me, it's getting a little large. I kind of like the Alpine area again, but it is what it is. People buy the land and they own it, and they can do what they want with it, the zone that it's applied for. So we try to keep it to a slow growth, but there's only so much you can do. The town can't hold so much, so.
Mr. Hatch?
I'm pro-growth. I'm for managed growth. I think most of us that have come here, that weren't born here, have come here for the reason that it was a nice, quiet community, a nice place to have a retirement or raise your children away from the hubbub in the bigger cities. I think that managed growth is appropriate. The future is coming, and change will happen. It's just a matter of how we manage that growth so that we don't create hotspots in the community that you can't get in and out of, or a growth that doesn't fit in with what we would like to see as far as how the city matures. So I am a pro-growth person with several reservations, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so there's always been questions about, you know, why don't we have this here? Why don't we have that here? This business, that business? And, you know, the objective is to bring businesses to the area. And of course, you guys do on city council as much as you can do. But there's been one that's actually been a highlighted thing. And that is, what are your thoughts about the building of a convention center in the city? Do you believe it should be completely funded by the city? And we'll start with Mr. Leach.
Oh, that's a good one. Got something we're talking about. I absolutely believe we need a convention center, but I think it needs to be small. I'm talking maybe 500 people that you can divide up to 200 to 100. We have so many things in our community that we go other places for, and we give our money away somewhere else when we can do it here. I'm 100% for that. We are talking about that now. We're going through studies. Unfortunately, we have to tell people how we should do it, but we've got to do that. We don't want to, I don't want to see something like Flex Prescott, who built that big, huge Toyota Center or wherever that's at. I don't think we need something like that, absolutely not, but something small. Some of the things that we're talking about is even smaller than that, where we can expand with false walls that they're going to build, and we can add on later. But I absolutely, 100%, think we need something. I'd like to see something where it's got an amphitheater outside so we can have a park. We own some property right up the road here that might be perfect for it. We don't know yet whether it needs another motel or not. A lot of people think it does. The professionals that study all that think they do. I don't think we do. I think it would hurt some of the motels we have here. So I think a convention center in town where it's close to drive to a motel would be perfect up here. And what was the other one?
It was, so do you believe it should be completely funded by the city?
No, absolutely not. I mean, it's our taxpayers' money. I think we need to get people involved. That's why the professionals say that we need a motel, because the motel can help fund it. Not sure that's the way to go about it. I think there's some businesses up here that would need something like that as well and may want to get involved. But I don't think the city should completely fund it at all.
Mr. Hatch?
I'm very much in favor of a convention center, depending upon where it's placed. That will be a drawing card for the people who want to come up here and enjoy the cool climes in the summertime. And I think there's an opportunity there. It will bring with it the need for more motel or hotel rooms. The outlying communities can handle some of that. But I think that if we launch into a full-blown convention center, we'll soon see the need to have more motel rooms available. When I was involved with the Hampton Hotel and we were taking plans back and forth with Hilton, there was concern on their part that we wouldn't have enough nights of use there that would qualify for a hotel the way we built it. We designed it. It was a departure from anything that they had ever approved. And they approved it, and they came out, and it's become a showcase for other people that are building hotels. They want to go see something that's a departure from the standard. But it was interesting when we built that, there were people driving into the parking lot before it was even striped, wanting to stay there. So there's a need in this community for more beds. And we'll talk about bed taxes at another point. But I think that I'm pro-growth from the standpoint, I would like to see the convention center. I'd like to see it managed in such a way that it would be an attraction to the community, not a detraction. We will bring with that more traffic, and we'll have to learn how to live with that and funnel it to the right places. We'll have more knees for eateries and places to bed. So that's where I am.
And then should the city completely fund it?
No.
Easy answer. Mr. Alsop?
Thank you. I'm, we've been sitting on this council for a long time, and we've been talking about having this convention center. The first convention center that was brought to our attention was the one up there on top of the hill that was going to be super huge with a hockey rink in it and everything else. And I think that was just a little bit outrageous for all of us. So the good thing is, we went back and asked to do different phases. We're on phase two right now, just phase one, to see if it's reliable for us to have a convention center here in Sholo. They came back and told us, yeah, it was, and that we needed motel rooms and restaurants and stuff like that too. But then phase two, they brought it down to the size where we're looking at that is compatible for Sholo and using it for the weekends that we have here or during the week for the different conventions that could come into town here. But it's, just like Mr. Leach said, is we'd much rather see the money stay in Sholo and say, going through Sholo, going to the casino or something like that and having a convention up there. They can handle about 400 people, and we'd like to have something like that. They will handle a bit more than that. And from what they're trying to tell us is that we could keep a convention center going every weekend, every week after the first two or three years. So we're just listening to what their analysts are kind of telling us and seeing where we're standing on that. Now, do I believe it needs to be funded by us? No. We really believe, and I think it's between all of us, is this thing needs to be privately run. And that way, we can stay out of it and let them run it the way that they want to run it and make the money for the city of Sholo. So if it comes out good and the numbers are right, I'm definitely looking forward to trying to do something with the convention center here in Sholo.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Rob. Yes? I just wanna add to that real quick. Since, since we're here, we have an audience. We are talking about that right now. So if you wanna get more involved in that, please come to our meetings because we, we're, there's seven of us up here that are trying to make decisions for ten thousand people and we get no input. So you all that are here, write in, show up, 'cause we are talking about that right now. And if you have any ideas, we're, we're definitely wanna listen because we don't wanna spend, waste taxpayers' money. And like I said, we don't wanna spend all of it. Our, our city's not gonna fund it anyway, but some input from the community would be awesome. This is one of the big topics that I think we're talking about right now. We have gone through a lot, the, the public safety building, not a lot of city input or public input. So any of these hot topics, we'd love to have your guys' input. I mean, showing up for this is phenomenal. Watching on TV is awesome, but we need more input from the public because when we do something wrong is when we get the input. But why weren't you here before we did something wrong? So I personally would like to see more people show up to meetings when we have these debates on, on something that's really big for our community. We, we need some help. Thank you.
Which is a good segue because I was gonna, the next question was actually, I'm gonna hybrid it. I've got a question that came from the audience, but the question I was gonna ask is how do you plan to involve residents in decision-making process in our town or in our city? But a question came in that said, where are, were you in favor of bringing a fries store to Sholo and what could have been done to bring them to locate up here? So I want, I would like each of you sort of to talk about what it is that you actually have influence upon and why you need that input from the community and need the community to reach out and do things as well, whenever it comes to bringing businesses here, such as fries. We'll start with Mr. Hatch.
I'm really in favor of having a, another shopping center, groceries or what have you, comparable to what we have now, only bigger and newer. There's nothing like competition that will drive prices the right direction for consumers. And right now, there's not a lot of competition to keep the prices as low as they need to be. I think that fries would be a good choice. There are other store names out there that I would be just as glad to see here. But I think we do and could use more opportunities to shop. And what was the other part of your question?
It was basically, you know, what, how can you encourage people to benefit you as a council in helping get those things to happen? I mean, what, what do they need to do as a citizenry?
Just what we're seeing right now. A few interested individuals coming in will bring more interested individuals in. I would like to see the chairs full. I wouldn't mind being called down for things that I'm saying if we get the right people in here and we can get some dialogue going between the constituencies in the city. I really think that it's, it's in the best interest of all of us that live here that you offer input, offer ideas. We don't have all of the good ideas, I believe, but we would, we'd certainly ask to stimulate input from the public. We would really like to see that. And having you in the, in the audience here or watching it on television and getting feedback to us as quickly as you can is a good way to influence what goes on here in the city.
Mr. Alsop.
Thank you, Rob. I think it goes back also for, we've been on, most of us have been on here for eight or years or better, and we've been doing budgets for every year for those eight years. And in the eight years that we've done budgets, we've put it out in newspapers, we put it in mailers, we do any, on TV, newspapers. We get, in eight years, I think we've had a total of one or two people show up in these meeting places while we're doing budgets. We're doing sixty, over sixty million dollar budget and we got one person to show up that can either complains or not complains or just sits there and listens. And so to get involved, we would love, I'm, I'm with Mr. Hatch, get people involved, get them here, call in, do something, but just to let us know that we're doing things right or we're doing things wrong. And I, so far, I, I believe that we're doing things right or we'd be hearing a bunch of complaints and I, and we haven't heard a bunch of complaints. But yet, we need to know if, I can go talk to my neighbors and say, we got a meeting, we're doing budgets, you know, this is, this is your money, you know, do you want us, how do you want us to spend your money? And it's just like, oh, you guys know what's going on. So, I mean, we would, John said the same, we'd love to have people come down here and tell, tell us, hey, I'm looking at this or I'm really, I think you guys are doing the right thing and you're moving the right direction. But I, I just don't know where else we could go to turn. I mean, we, we do the newspaper and we do TV. We try to get mailers. We announce it every time. And I, I even put it on, over eight years ago, hey, my phone number is nine-two-eight-five-three-seven-zero-one-two-four. If you want anything, call me. My phone number is in the phone book. I mean, the phone book is this thick now. It used to be this thick. But it, you know, my number's in that phone book. Give me a call. But we just can't, for some reason, get people to come in, right or wrong or indifferent, but we could, we really could use your feedback.
John Leach Jr.
Mine's easy, ditto. No. I mean, absolutely, especially the part about the budget. I take doing the budget, I've done, like Mike said, we've done a budget for over eight years and, and I, I like to see less people here 'cause obviously we're doing a good job with the budget. We don't get a lot of complaints on our emails. I don't know if the city manager does, but less people here, we're doing a good job. Some input or where you want some money to go would be awesome. Whether that goes to the city manager or not, we all have personal emails for the city. So contact us through that. You don't have to go to the city manager. You can, you can email us directly. I'm pretty sure I don't have to advertise my phone because it's out there somewhere. Just look me up somewhere in cyberspace and there it is. I only have one phone number. But as far as getting more business up here, I think the same thing. I think the city input, you know, if everybody wants a fry, send us an email. All we could do is that forward that on to probably the city manager or whoever, but I, I know that Steve North, the city manager and our mayor, they travel to Vegas, I think, show or something to bring business in it. We've had a lot of businesses in the last ten years from that show. So not saying that a fry's not coming, I, I, maybe it'll go in the, the Kmart area. I have no idea. I know there's a lot of rumors out there thinking that we know something y'all don't know. We don't know anything. I mean, you guys will know just as soon as we will. So if there's something going in there that you guys know about, let us know 'cause then we could start the rumors, too. But, but I, all I can stress is that the whole reason I got involved, I'm not, not a politician, is to get more people involved, but I would like to see more people in the community definitely get involved. Our emails are out there, but come, come to us. You don't have to go to the city manager. We get a lot of emails. I'm sure you guys do, too. Mainly it's something that we did wrong or somebody else did wrong in the community that we had no power over, but that's part of the job. I don't mind those either. Did that answer all that? I'm not, I forgot by the time it got to me, so.
I think you did.
Did it? Good. All right.
Good. So we're gonna do a final question, and it's going to be for each of you, of course. Give the number-one reason that you joined the, or that you ran initially for the, the city council. I think we're starting with Mr. Hatch, aren't we? Or did we already start with?
You already did.
Okay. So we're gonna start with Alsop.
Say that again. Say that one more time, Rob.
So number-one reason.
Why?
Why you ran for city council and why you're running now?
Number-one reason is I, I love serving the people of Sholo. I love seeing growth. I love to. This town has always been a, a place in my, where no matter what happens, I, I just love to be involved in assisting and helping growth. We're talking about stores. We're talking about interstructure. We talk about airports. We talk about different things, just to be involved in and trying to help and try to make that Sholo place a, a better place to live and a better place to raise our kids and family. That's one reason I got involved and that's why I ran for city council.
John Leach Jr.
Well, I already kinda said it from the beginning. I, I wanted to be involved in the community, wanted to be involved in the city of Sholo. I didn't know I wanted to do this, that's for sure. I mean, I, like I said before, I'm not a politician. I, I got my start in planning and zoning because of course, like some of the people that are on planning and zoning, had a problem with something they were building. And I was building a shop and didn't like all the rules I had to do, so I got involved in planning and zoning. Not that I changed anything, but I wanted to get involved because it made absolutely no sense, some of the rules that they were making me do. So that's where I got involved. I sat on there, like I said, for six years, or three years as chairman. I, I believe it was, might have been Rick Forno come up to me and said, you need to get on city council. I go, no, I don't. A couple of years later, I said, well, okay, let's see what happens. So it, it, just to stay involved, there's, there's nothing more, like everybody up here's gonna say, they love Sholo, they love the White Mountains, why wouldn't you wanna be involved? I, I don't think I could sit at home and watch TV. I used to watch these meetings. I know that sounds kinda dumb, crazy, but sit at home and watch these meetings. My wife would leave and go sit in the other room and I'd watch council meetings. She goes, what are you doing? I go, I don't know. Just see what's going on. So I would watch it, too. The reason I'm running this, this next term is just, I just wanna finish. This is my last term. I, I, that, that I'm telling myself is for sure. I'm hoping, there's some rumor mills out there, some people, some friends of mine that, that are possibly running it, 'cause there's, there's gonna be three, four openings in two years. So I kinda wanna stay on, on the board or the city council for that reason and to stay involved. There's a lot of, I'm very busy right now, but I, I make time for the city council as much you wanna put in, as much you get out of it. So I just, I just gotta stay involved. I don't know what I would do, I don't know what I'm gonna do in four years, but we'll see what happens.
Mr. Hatch.
I got involved with the city council as a spinoff from my tenure in the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was the chairman there. And we're going through some hard times with our construction and I voiced my discontent with the way things were going. We would have building codes that were in conflict with one another. I'd get something done and the next inspector'd come by and say, that's not right, you have to do it this way. So I was unhappy about having to undo and redo work and I became vocal. I came down and visited with the city manager and planning and zoning director. And as an outshot from that, when openings came or election time came around for the city council, they asked if I'd be interested in putting my name in the hat. And I thought about it long and hard and I decided, yes, I would. I would. I'd like to be involved with it and, and not a, a victim of poor decisions that might be made. But I enjoyed being involved with the city, with these gentlemen. These, these two gentlemen sitting next to me were my main contact into the city council when I was in the Planning and Zoning Commission. And one of these persons up here made a mistake, asked me if I would like to run, and I said yes. Now.
Don't blame it all on me.
The reason why I have six, six years in, in the office is I ran against Gary Whipple and I was running for city council and he was running for city council and we tied and we had a runoff and Gary won. Best man in the world, good man. I didn't begrudge him with anything, but he passed away in the middle of his second, second year of his four-year term. And I got a call and it's, it was a call from the city. They said, Gary Whipple has passed away. Would you like, we're taking applications, are you interested? I said, I ran, sure, I'm interested, I'll throw my name in the hat. And there were seven other gentlemen that had tenure on, on the council and, and being mayor and things. And so it came down to being appointed. And when I was appointed, I was really, it was a gratifying feeling that I would be appointed with men that were senior to me in experience around city government. And so I was chosen, I got my two years, and then I ran on my own for four years. But I, I really find that it's a, it's a good way for a person like me. It'll keep you off the streets. It'll give you something to think about other than what's coming up on the next soap opera or baseball game that my wife always watches.
You watch soap operas and she watches baseball.
No. That was a joke. It was a poor joke. I know that. But anyway, that's how it all happened with me. And I am very happy to be in the city government and working with such a fine bunch of people is over there in that city building. There, there are some marvelous people over there and they have the best interest of the community at heart. And we really appreciate them. I salute them. They work hard and sometimes we get drug into the work with them, which is, is going on now. So anyway, that's my two cents and I appreciate the opportunity to.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before I give them one last opportunity to, to tell you why you should vote for them, I wanna explain just a few things about the election. There's, there's three positions, so there are three votes. You'll vote in the election with three votes for four people running. If, it depends on what happens in the primary, whether it moves forward. For the candidates, anyone that receives more than fifty percent of the vote for the office of a council member, they're considered elected. If all three seats are not filled at the primary, then a general election will be held in November sixth. So that last date of vote for this election isn't yet. So you've got until July thirtieth to register to vote in the August twenty-eighth primary. And then moving forward, depending upon what happens, the early ballots will get mailed out August first and you have until August seventeenth to actually request an early ballot. And you could do that by calling eight-hundred-six-six-eight-three-eight-six-seven and they can do that for you. And the last date that they suggest mailing back a voted ballot is, if you're gonna mail it, is Friday, the August twenty-fourth. So for the twenty-eighth. So final thing from each of the gentlemen, very quickly, please. Tell us why we should, and I'm a citizen of Sholo, why, why should I vote for you? Mr. Alsop.
Thank you, Rob. I'd love to have your vote for the council of the city of Sholo. One is, we're transparent up here. All of us council members that's been here, we're transparent. We work with staff, staff work with us. Just like Mr. Hatch said, we have a good relationship with, with staff. But the trust that, that we feel that you, the citizens of Sholo have for us is, we had home rule and now we have permanent base budget. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we take real diligent awareness of, when it comes to budget and your money, of how to spend it and where to spend it. And so I would love to make sure, let you guys know that if you elect me, I'll make sure where that money's being spent, that it's spent wisely. Thank you.
Mr. John Leach Jr.
Well, I'm, I'm sure everybody up here's gonna probably say the same thing, but if, if you think we're doing a good job, you ought to keep us in here. If we're not, then get us out. It's, it's pretty easy. Like Mr. Alsop said, I think the budget is huge when you're dealing with that kinda money and, and put it in certain places. And, and we, we are very conscious of where that money goes to. Sometimes we, the budgets sometimes get a little too easy on us because when we come to our meetings and, and the city staff and manager already has it budgeted out where they want that money spent. We made a lot of changes this year. We made a lot of changes this year on, on some of the things that we'd like to see in the city. So I think the budget's huge. I, I'd like to your vote, just to continue what we're doing. The convention center, and I say convention center, but to me, that sounds too big, but that convention center is huge on my agenda right now. I'd like to see something and keep everybody in this community. So if there was anything that was on my priority budget, that would be it. I know when I ran four years ago, the one thing that was on my mind was photo enforcement and I know a lot of people liked it, I didn't. So I ran saying I didn't like it. So if you want a convention center, vote for me 'cause I'm gonna really push it hard. Thank you.
Mr. Hatch.
I'm very much in, I'm, I'm very much in favor of a convention center. I'm, I'm very much pro-growth. I want to see growth happen reasonably. I just don't wanna see things popping up willy-nilly. I like Sholo the way it was and I want, want to carry that forward. I want to be able to look down from a cloud if I'm there and say, Sholo looks like it should and it's managed growth that started even before we were here. And now we have an opportunity to continue as things come at us, as the population comes out of California and starts coming our direction. We want to watch how the growth happens. I'm very much in favor of managed growth. I'm very happy with the direction that the community's gone. I'm so thrilled with the, the hospital that is going up with Summit. That was a real drawback for a lot of people that wanted to come here.